Our security program, I know we're going to be talking about the school district officers today.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Thank you very much. In the spirit of Stephen Covey and his seven habits, I want to remind everybody what habit number two is. We're going to begin with end in mind. The purpose of this presentation today, although it's very, very brief, but the purpose is, or direction of the board, staff needs to hear the conversation amongst the board and to get some sort of indication as to the direction in which the board wants the staff to proceed in terms of providing security on our campuses. Okay? So with that having been said, we thought the first thing we should do is get together with the board and share with the board some of the facts. We know there's a lot of misinformation out there, a lot of people talking about it. We know this is a very highly followed or tracked issue, as it should be. It's a very serious issue. But we want to make sure that we're all talking the same talk. We want to make sure that we're looking at the numbers on both sides, on what I mean by both sides, by both entities, by the school board and the sheriff's department as well. So the information I'm going to provide to you today is the most recent information we have. Had an opportunity to meet with sheriff department staff yesterday, and the numbers that I share with you today are reflective of that conversation, and these are provided directly from the sheriff's department. Before I get into the brief PowerPoint, I want to be very clear. I am not an agent or representative of the City Sheriff's Office. I do not speak on behalf of them. I cannot answer questions pursuant to their organizational structure or their desire for the program. So should you ask a question in line with that concept, please know I'm not being flippant in my response, but I can't answer that.
Thank you.
We were hopeful that there would be someone from the sheriff's office here today to answer a question, should there be those types of questions from the board. Unfortunately, they declined that invitation. So we're going to focus today on the resources that we have at our disposal. We're going to share with you the most recent proposal provided to us by the sheriff's office. Then I'm also going to share with you the options that are afforded to us under Senate Bill 726. Okay? Sound like the plan?
I can make sure I understand. We invited them and they said, "No, thank you"?
We did extend an invitation, yes.
Yes.
And I think we're going to go the other direction, where the sheriff's department, the school system, whatever, work together to prevent accidents. That is a black and white. Probably the school board is the only one that's mandated. That's it.
Oh, you say "work together." It seems like you're suggesting to the other people they might join.
Sorry, Mr. Bishop, go ahead with your presentation. I'm just saying.
She's trying to say "Mr. Bishop" from saying something. He's wanting badly to get out of his mouth.
I just want to make sure we stay on task with the information that we're prepared to be able to provide today.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands why I'm not here.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so if you look at our Safe Schools Fund and the monies that are allocated to us from the state, there is a breakdown. You'll see that under the allocation says third calculation, we were slated to receive $310,915. In the final conference report, that was increased by an additional $643,000 and change. It is our understanding pursuant to Senate Bill 726 that the funds that are specified for recurrence is the $643,000, $656,000. However, all that being said, the total allocation for the school district is $954,571. That's the money that we are provided by the state to make sure our schools are safe. Okay?
Mr. Bishop, just on that number before we leave it, the $643,000 and change, is that also the amount that is basically specified to go towards either school security or resource officers?
Yes, sir.
That portion of that?
That is correct.
Where the other, the $310,000 is safe schools?
But it's my understanding that, and Mr. Bradshaw certainly, I would defer to you, and I would also defer to Ms. Sernish, as she's read the law many times, but I believe that the $643,000 was in addition to what you did, what we did in the previous school year. And we did allocate all $310,000, actually a little bit more than that, to the SRO program last year. So it is of my opinion that those monies are earmarked for SROs as well. But certainly, I would defer to Mr. Bradshaw. Do you read that differently?
No. The last sentence in the bill says that the additional funding is $643,000, $656,000. It's to be used exclusively for employer contracting for school resource officers. And it says, "which shall be in addition to the number of officers employed and contracted for the 2017 fiscal year." So we use it in addition to what we have.
So having said that, we'll stay along the lines of the $954,571, and that's the monies we have available to us. We know that there are costs that we have in terms of school safety. The crossing guards, our traffic control is increasing to $50,595. That's a nominal increase. We were notified when Ms. Sernish and I went to the sheriff's department to speak with them that the cost for that service is going to be going up, and it was a few thousand dollars at max, maybe $1,500. The extra security detail, last year, we spent $47,900 and change. We have been notified by the sheriff's department that the cost for those services will increase as well. We have not been given a definitive number of that yet, so we're awaiting that. And you'll see underneath the Safe School Funds.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bishop, but I just wanted to know, the crossing guards, traffic control is not a requirement, the school district is not required to have crossing guards and traffic control. That is the requirements of municipalities for them to have crossing guards and traffic control outside of their... I believe we do that because we want crossing guards, traffic control at other areas in the apartment of the sheriff's office and previous years. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, is that over the years, we've been asked to put a traffic control officer in various places just to assist in traffic control, and I believe through the partnership, we've been able to do that. And certainly, Mr. Sernish, you can...
In the reasons with the sheriff's office, it's because the sheriff remembers of understanding or had a local agreement with both the city of Crystal River and the city of Inverness to take over their law enforcement activities. So that's why it's been a partnership of the sheriff's office and not Inverness or Crystal River.
At one time, I think we did have the Inverness or Crystal River, I thought, provided some of that.
They are paying some.
They are paying, okay. That's what I was going to say.
These are the positions that we're paying.
That we're paying for, so they are paying for others, just not... Got it.
And again, why then are we paying for positions for crossing guards because we want extra positions? Or is it because that's just an agreement we've had with the sheriff's?
It's a agreement we have with the sheriff's office. I believe the statute says that municipalities have to do crossing guards. We, through the years, have wanted some crossing guards in places that are outside of municipalities. And so I think that's probably entered into some agreements with the sheriff's office in years past.
It was part of the previous agreement.
It was part of the previous agreement.
That was just one of the costs we picked up from the other costs he paid us.
Correct.
Okay. And then if you look under the, still under the Safe Schools Fund expenses, Senate Bill 726 requires us to hire an administrative position that would be titled a school safety specialist or assign those duties, and we're in the process of trying to work through that. The Senate Bill requires, the piece of legislation requires that that person's in position by July 1st, 2018. So we will have to move on that relatively quickly, as there are very specified responsibilities of that position shortly after July 1st, or things they have to do, the school safety assessments, a multitude of different things. So if you look at the total expenses, if you add those three things up, we're about $196,000. Simple math is take the $954 we have and subtract the $196 away from that, we're at There's a lot of different ways of looking at this, but I try to make it as simple as possible. Anything above $758,000, I just want the board to understand that you will be having to tap into the reserve fund to accommodate any dollars above and beyond that. Now, we do know that the board, at a previous meeting, we presented it and we agreed that we would send a letter to the county saying that we would pledge $877,000. I believe that was to cover 45% of the cost of salary and benefits. I can't remember all the details. And we did submit that letter, so certainly, we were dipping into the fund balance by virtue of just the $877,000 at that point in time. Yesterday, had an opportunity to meet with a staff member of the sheriff's department. Here's the most simplistic way at which I can break it down from the numbers we were provided. This current year, we paid $367,469 for SROs. The number provided for adding nine SROs with a lease, I'm sorry, with an option to lease the vehicles as opposed to purchasing vehicles. I know the board's been very clear with a concern about buying vehicles, not buying vehicles, but I'm just sharing with you, this was the least expensive route presented. That's $897,000 in addition to the $367,000 that we have already currently paying. And then some other startup cost totals just under $102,000. So in simple math, that's 1.367 million dollars. You have $758,000 before you touch the reserve fund, so there's a deficit or a difference of $609,000 to cover all costs.
Can you say that number again?
Which number is that, the difference?
The last?
$609,000 and change.
So we have paid them $643,657 for our current SROs. We're only five officers short.
I'm sorry to say $367,000, did you say that, ma'am?
Yes.
That's what we paid this year, yes, ma'am.
We paid this year. And we're only adding five.
That's correct.
With 1.367.
Those are numbers we're providing. But I would remind the board that I believe there's been a movement away from the arrangement that we've had with the sheriff's department over the years to where I believe it's been said that we pay 27%, which I'm not disputing that. We pay 27% of the cost. I believe in addition, I think it's double-fold here, twofold, if you will. I think in a time where there's a need to apparently add SROs, we're also being faced with the increase of that cost share from 27% to, I think, a desired 50% since last I heard.
And the mandate, let's not be a, Mr. Bradshaw question, but the mandate does just an SRO. It doesn't include an SRO with a car, does it?
I think that is probably a misinterpretation, because the statute just says that the school district, district school board and the district school superintendent will partner with the law enforcement agency to assign a safe school officer at each school. And a safe school officer can be an SRO, or can be your own police force, or can be a guardian, an insurance guardian.
Mr. Bradshaw, under the current new law, if we were to have applied what we did last year and for the last 10 years, would we actually meet the law?
I believe we'd meet the law, yes.
So what we've been doing for the last 10 years, you're saying we meet the law?
I...
I'm not saying that we are there, but that was my, that was my understanding from others as well.
I think that the infusion is that people want to say that the law says that there shall be an SRO at every campus, and that's not what the law says. The law says shall either to establish or assign. So, you know, establish one may mean that you need to have one there, or you can assign one. And so assign can be, in my opinion, that you can have one SRO per, you know, per school or one SRO per a couple of schools. I know we have one at every high school, every middle school, and then we also assign an SRO at the primary school level to cover multiple schools.
Ms. Hemel, of all of our primary schools, have we not assigned in our SRO in the last 10 years?
Currently, I think they have two per school, two schools for one SRO.
But have we assigned an SRO to each of those schools?
Yes, they have assigned two schools.
By previous contract?
I'm saying, by previous contract, we have already done that. So the question, though, that you said in part of the thing that you were reading from statute, Mr. Bradshaw, the $600 and something dollars as provided under 7026, I'm sorry, the money provided under 7026, which is approximately $600,000, did you state that was, must be used for additional SROs?
The way, my understanding of the way the funding mechanism works is this, is that we would, that you receive a certain amount of funding, and it's based upon, unweighted FTE is based upon, there's an allocation for that, there's a minimum amount of funding per district which reaches a certain amount of funding, and then after that, there is, I believe it's $640,145, I could be off a little bit there, that is specially allocated this year, that must exclusively be used for the SRO program, or if you had your own, I think you could probably use that to increase your own police department to do that. But it does not apply to the Marshall program or the partial guardian program. But that additional funding...
But does it state we have to have additional above, you said, the previous year's levels?
It doesn't say, well...
I thought that's what I heard you say, that's why I was trying to understand.
No, that's fine. What it says is that... Hang on. While Mr. Bradshaw is looking for that, there's no doubt in my mind that the intent of the law was to have a person on each campus when they're a school resource officer, a guardian or a school safety officer, that they would be on every campus to defend, you know, these people on that campus.
On the other hand, legislators have also said that this was not a law that necessarily funded things to be able to provide for that, and that's why they provided mechanisms to utilize.
And I know in other districts, other larger districts, they're still going to have to have an SRO assigned to multiple schools in order to try to meet the mandate of the law. Going back to your question, Mr. Kennedy, what it says is that any additional funds appropriated to this allocation, which is your safe schools allocation in the 2018, '19 fiscal year, to the school resource officer program established shall be used exclusively for employer contracting for school resource officers.
Okay.
So that additional funding has to be used only, only for that. Part that me and Mr. Bishop were discussing, which it says, "which shall be in addition to the number of officers employed or contracted for in the 1718 schools."
Where that, where does that, that's the part I'm trying to understand.
Which I read that to say that this money is to be used for the increase, the special allocation is to be used to increase the number of school resource officers that you have for, to try to hook on. I agree with Mr. Dodd, although I don't believe that's what the intent of the law is or was actually written down, maybe two different things. But I think that money, the additional monies can only be used for SRO program.
Okay. But it sounds like that we're saying that $641,000 are to be used to increase the number of SROs over and above the current year's SROs.
It has to be exclusively used for the school resource officer program, which is in addition to the number of officers, which I interpret that to mean that if we spent X amount of dollars in 2017, '18, we can't, we should not decrease that amount of funding, you know, for the SRO program, you know. We don't get to decrease what we did last year, is basically what I'm going to add to that. What we spent last year, we need to use plus what this, and it says recurring funds, although we don't know how recurring funds work. Recurring funds work until it's changed.
My concern about when we have to be careful of saying what we believe is the intent, though, of the law, is the intent of the law would have also been to provide the adequate funding to meet the intent of the law.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think, you know...
Where would we get the funding?
The intent of the law, well, that's where communities work together. And so I think the intent is that we make sure our campuses are safe and protected and defended, and that there will be someone on the campus who is armed. And it's our job to figure out the best way to meet that mandate. And I personally think it's a good way to go.
And I agree with you, Mr. Dodd. I think the intent, and I think we would all like to see one person on every one of our campuses, too, just to say that we have, we've done our responsibility to our schools and our children, but our community has made it very, very clear that they don't have that same disinterest. Our county commissioners are saying nothing. Our sheriff is not here. The community didn't pass, they had some shift tax that we needed. So I think we're on our own. We've got to decide as a board and our superintendent how we can protect our children, because I don't see this as a community effort.
There's, obviously, you know, we're trying to pay costs that are given to us from the sheriff's office. We recognize that the past program, which has been very successful, which, by the way, Sheriff Prendergrass signed this last year's contract, you know, that was in agreement with everything, but now, instead of just looking at the nine new positions, we're having to go back and look at increased expenses for the existing program. And I mean, I did the math on that. The increase was $286,418 just for the existing program. That's how much the increase is for the officers we currently have. That's not dealing with the nine new officers. So we've got to look at our monies that we have coming in and look at what we're willing to do and communicate with our commissioners. I think a lot of them want to see this program succeed the way we want it and work with the sheriff to come up with the best method of meeting our needs at the cost, at the expenses and the money, the revenue that we have to deal with. And so we look at the guardian money that's projected in the neighborhood of $400,000, but we don't even really know if that's a for-sure thing, that the possibility that there could be that money infused into a school resource officer funding program, you know, to fund school resource officers, but we don't know if that's going to happen or not. The assumption is, it will happen. But on the other hand, even with that money, it's going to, it's still going to, there's still going to be a difference. And I think that the, you know, the county commission, while they have said that they don't want to raise taxes, and I appreciate that, they've also said that they're willing in some ways to try to help out and get things started, but we have to look at the recurring costs that we're going to be forced to pay. My hope is that it will get worked out next year in the state legislature. There will be more funding, more funding coming to us for this program, but there's no guarantee of that. I feel like there will be changes and things will be tweaked, and in reality, for a short amount of time, I think the legislature, the senate and the house worked hard on a bill in a short amount of time to get something out there. They didn't force some things upon us. They didn't force us to have guardians. They made it available if that was the way the community wanted to go. According to Sheriff Prendergrass, and I know Ms. Hemel has said the same thing, I mean, there's concern. Our first choice is SROs. But now we're getting to the point is, as you all have negotiated, and I've tried to work behind the scenes, too, to talk to people, I'm not sure that we can have all SROs, that there could be some other options. Other counties have an SRO 2 program or a, you know, that's more of a sheriff's security person, maybe still a sworn deputy, but it's only there for security of the campus. It doesn't handle calls for service. It doesn't handle issues with petty cracks or arrests. They'd still have to send someone there, but someone is on that campus trained and ready to respond in case there is a lunatic that comes on campus to disarm the children. So if we could even work at three of these positions, these nine positions, I mean, we could save over $120,000. So as I run the figures, you know, if, and as I've been given information from the sheriff's office, and Mr. Bishop has given the information, superintendent has, sheriff has, met with the sheriff numerous times to talk about it, it seemed like we were getting close, but it's not solved.
Do you think that he is open to a guardian program? Mr. Dodd?
He has told me that he's not open to the guardian program right now, but I think, or the reserve deputy program. But I think if we, if we come down to the fact is, this is, this is the only amount of money we have, we've got to make something work.
I mean, I'll disagree with you. I think you've tried very hard to help us as a board stay open to that.
Right.
Even while we have said we want to, we would prefer to do with SROs, but I think we are at that point to say, we have to be willing to think out of the box.
Right. I agree that the best option is to have someone at every school. I really do. And I think that is what the governor initially had proposed. I don't believe that's what the law came down and said, but that's what I think that, you know, your optimal and the best way to do it is. Remember, there's only three ways of complying with the statute. One is enter into an agreement with the law enforcement agents, with, a law enforcement agency to have an SRO on your campus. Number two is basically having your own police force. And number three is to have a guardian program. And to have a guardian program, it specifically states that the sheriff has to agree to have a guardian program, and then the board has to agree to have a guardian program also. So that's a two-prong test, you know, one by the sheriff saying, "I'll do it," the other with the board saying, "We will do it, we will do it also." There are, but those people have to be, in the guardian program, a school board employee. You cannot privately contract that out or anything else the way the law is written. Specifically states they're school employees, so...
Mr. Bradshaw, how does that relate to the attorney general's opinion on Manatee County regarding school districts that can hire a private security firm?
That's a 2014 attorney general opinion.
No, I know.
And I think that, I think it says that you could use some of your safe school monies to pay for a private security firm, but it doesn't apply to whether it, they qualify as a safe school officer underneath the statute.
No, but the question would be then if you blended using a security firm at days that, for example, if an SRO were assigned, as we currently do, to two schools, but on the day that, that they are at another elementary school, you contracted to have a security firm at that school, you would still be, I would think, making the letter of the law and covering that.
I think that this board could hire a private security firm and put a private security person at every single school, but it doesn't comply with the law.
No, but if we've still signed, as, if we currently, if we currently are meeting the law with how we are operating now, and we have, what I believe our contract says is that we have 14 SROs and one, I think our current contract says 14, though, plus one sergeant.
Right. For a total of 15.
For a total of 15. So I'm saying if we are, and I believe, though, there is actually 16 that is...
Now, it's 14...
14 plus one.
Plus a lieutenant and a sergeant.
Yeah, I think the contract, though, only has the...
It's 15.
15. It has 15. So I'm just saying is, if the contract now states for 15, and we were covering, and that has assigned, by assigning, it has met the law, then could the private security cover the cost when the assigned SRO is not there?
Mr. Kennedy, I think what we've tried to tell you is that the old contract's gone. We can't keep what we have. That's not an option. That's not been presented to us as an option. So I understand what you're saying, but that's not an option for us. We have not been presented, "Keep what you have and pay what you paid last year," and then what do you want to do with the rest of the money? That's not an option that we've been presented with from the sheriff's office.
I think private security...
Is that correct, Ms. Hemel?
No, of course.
And I think private security would be in addition to what we were required.
I agree with you.
No, I understand what you're saying. So I think what you're trying to say, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kennedy, is saying, okay, we assign one SRO for three primary schools, and the only reason I say primary schools is that's where we typically have, you know...
Right.
...one SRO for, you know, for multiple schools. And then put private security at those other schools. I still think we comply with the law. I don't believe you can use your safe schools money to pay for it.
Okay. That at least answers the finance question on it.
And I don't know. I don't, I don't know, because I know the statute...
And I don't know. I don't, I don't know, because I know the statute is clear that all the new money that we get has to go to the, to the SRO program, plus what we did last year. And so, I don't know, I don't know if you can, how much safe school money we have left over. And if we do have money left over, we can probably get that for a safe school thing. I have not looked into that. I'm sure that that's probably something that we could use it for, but...
So one of the costs that's not here though, that I don't understand, is, I see with the cost that's being requested of the school district, it appears that it's $1.367 million. What is the cost though, of, that the sheriff is saying it's going to cost for the sheriff for 12 months of the year to meet 7026, as he's outlining?
I don't have a degree of comfortfulness or comfortability, or whatever word you want to say, to answer that, because I don't know. I don't know that off the top of my head.
You've never had that figure given to us?
Not to my knowledge. Um, no.
Mr. Bradshaw, you gave us three options.
Yes, ma'am.
You gave us the SRO. Mr. Bishop, will you put to the next slide, sort of the three options over?
No, ma'am. I can go to that slide.
That way, we're resting the slide.
And let me, there are other districts that are using a guardian program.
It has to be approved by our sheriff.
By, by their sheriff. And so, just because I know that there's talking, talking, you know, about the guardian program. First off, their sheriffs have approved a guardian program. You know, you cannot have a full-time instructional person be a guardian. And so, you know, so some of the other districts, they, and I know, like, I believe it's Polk County, wherever Sheriff Judge is, you know, they've had a guardian program for a while, you know, training, training teachers and different things like that. But most of these other districts, what they are doing is creating a new job description, and, which would be a school guardian. And so, and then, having, hiring those people to act as a school guardian, but they are a school district employee. And that's, and that's, and that's what they are doing in some other districts.
And what is the school safety officers?
Right, but Polk's done that. I think, I think Pasco is doing that now, and I believe there's one more that, that is, you know...
The school safety officers.
Well, that's what I would refer to more as, as a school safety officer, is that person that is trained. I know, Mr. Bradshaw used the term guardian, and, you know, a guardian under the law truly is an existing employee at a school who is trained under the statute to be armed. That's what a guardian is.
That's the difference between a guardian and a school safety officer.
Okay, so what he mentioned about how some other counties are doing it, instead of using an existing, and it, and by the way, it cannot be a classroom teacher.
Right.
So we need to make sure everyone knows that, because I hear that all the time about armed teachers. It's not about armed teachers. None of us want that. It's not allowed in the bill. But what the guardian program would take, an administrator, a principal, assistant principal, coach, I think there's an ROTC instructor, a retired on first roster, who is not assigned mainly to classroom duties, who's not a classroom teacher, and allow them to be trained, and allow them to be armed on campus. And that is why they've said that you can do this so much with less expensively, if you already use existing personnel, and you train them and you arm them. And that's not the way that we're saying that we're going to go. But the school safety officer is like what Mr. Bradshaw just mentioned, where the school district hires a separate person, not someone who's already employed, hires a separate person and trains them under the same statute, I guess, right, Mr. Bradshaw, of the guardian? Well, yes, yes. With the sponsorship of the sheriff, and they become a school safety officer. The way that the statute reads is confusing in the way it names certain positions. It initially says that you have to hire, you have to assign one or more safe school officers, okay? The first category of a safe school officer is a school resource officer, which is going to be a law enforcement officer.
Sworn.
It's either going to be, it's either going to be a sheriff's deputy or a police department, you know, police department officer. The second category is a school safety officer, which is your own police force, because they have to undergo criminal background investigations, and be, and be law enforcement officers as defined in statute 943.10, print, one, closed print, which they are actually a law enforcement officer. They are just employed by the school district. But they have to carry the same certification and be, and be certified under the provisions of 943 and employed, and employed by either a law enforcement agency or by the district school board. So, those can kind of blend together here, but I generally take that as, you know, if they're going to be employed by another law enforcement agency, you know, then they are going to be, you know, probably be more of a school resource officer than as a school safety officer. And then the third is at the, at the school district's discretion, participate in the school marshal program, which is your guardian program, which has to be approved by the sheriff initially. And they have to be a school district employee.
And if I could...
It gets, it gets circular, because the names are, you know, they're, they're taking safe school and they're swapping them back and forth, you know, to try to create different categories, which makes it confusing sometimes.
And the guardian program is the program where some districts are hiring personnel as a school guardian. They're developing a job description. They're calling them a school guardian. So it would require our sheriff to agree to have a school guardian program and to train those folks. But we could come up with a job description, hire school guardians, they would be armed, and they would be defending our campuses.
And they would be our school employees.
Yes.
But I don't believe that you can take the safe school that they allocation of $634,000 or whatever and use it to pay them, because I think that's a significant...
I don't know that for sure. That allocation, my understanding was to go, could go for any of the three options, but perhaps not.
That was what I thought, but I'm, now I'm confused.
Because the guardian program, my understanding is that it's a school board employee that goes through all this training and gets a $500 stat.
But some of the districts are using the guardian program and they are hiring the new stat. It's not the first stat.
Then that must be what Mr. Dodd is saying.
They're hired by law enforcement to come in there, and they are, they're boys, the sheriff's office is training them, but they're school board employees.
But then that must be school safety officers, as Mr. Dodd is saying.
That's under the school guardian program.
School guardian.
School safety officers must be law enforcement officers with arrest powers.
Right.
So that's your own police...
They have arrest powers on campus, not off campuses.
So if the school district has its own law enforcement agency, then they could use the safe schools' SRO money and all of that to fund that?
That's my understanding.
SRO was what I understood. They were moving out.
They are on campus.
But if the sheriff would agree to have a different classification of an officer, that could be a position within the sheriff's office that could be utilized at a lesser expense. If the sheriff had, like, the reserve deputy program, and those were used for as school resource officers, then...
But the statute does not permit us to do anything other than, if the sheriff does not, or the law enforcement agency does not agree to a guardian training program, then it's off the table as a consideration.
I have not delved into weeds as far as the guardian program, because my understanding is that the sheriff would have an interest in agreeing, in moving in that direction. So it's kind of taken some of what I need to know out of the equation.
My concern is that we're on a time limit.
Definitely.
And negotiations, I don't think have improved one bit since this law is mandated to us. And it's quite obvious, because there's nobody even here in a green seat to talk to us. So I'm, I'm looking at, pursuing options so that we can conform, because we're the mandated body, and we've got to have somebody in every one of our schools, 19, I think we counted, by August. And so I think, I still think we need to rely on ourselves and comply with that law, hire the people that we need, and make sure that we've got those 19 people in all of our schools come August.
One thing that I went out, you know, in looking at the personal cost of the 15 that we had in the contract and the nine that we agreed on, that would be...
I don't think we agreed on it.
Well, that we had consensus on.
We offered it, but we didn't get any agreement.
Well, when I just look at personnel costs, and we use the figure the sheriff gave us for 22 SROs and two SRO sergeants, it comes up to $1.855 million. Now, I'm only talking about personnel costs.
It's like putting a car in there.
Okay, right. I'm only talking about personnel costs. So follow me. I'm going to, I'm going to take us on a little train of thought. So if we were to pay 50% of that, which, you know, I personally don't agree with, I think the sheriff has more stakes, should be paying 55, 45. That's what I think is the fair way. But if we were to pay 50% of that, it would come out to $927,706. We have $954,000 in safe school allocation. That is enough to cover 24 school resource officer positions. When we look at, the next thing the sheriff gave us was operating expenditures. And we look at operating costs, and the increase in the operating was pretty, was a large amount. I mean, we paid, the whole operating budget was $18,819 last year, was what they gave us for operating. This year, it's gone up to $156,512. You know, if we were to even just allow the operating expenses to triple, we were paying $2,500 per school resource officer for operating costs based on, that's our half, $5,000, we paid 2,500 of it, and that's still more than triple the cost. We would look at $60,000. If we look at the capital now, and my take is this, our arrangement that we have, the partnership, the agreement that we have with the sheriff right now, the capital offsets what we give the sheriff with Kuchu Technical College for office space, for the firing range, the driving range, the obstacle course, and all of those things that we give to the sheriff offsets any capital costs on cars. I think it's a, it's a fair...
$1.6 million annually.
You know, if, if anything, it could probably end up being more in our favor if we had to spell it all out.
Mrs. Hemmels presented that when we were on with that, and he stopped at that.
Well, I know, but what I'm saying is, is this the way we make the program work the way the sheriff wants it to work? And so if we look at that as a wash, though, and I'm, I'm not for paying for capital for SROs. If we remember, there could be $400,000 coming down the pipe for, for the guardian program, possibly. I think the county commission is, will, is, will be willing to entertain helping out maybe the amount of $100,000. That could take up his, that could help him there too. That could help the sheriff side of it. But even with that, we'll have an unfunded amount of $33,135. If we add in $60,000 in operating expenses that we're going to give for the SROs, we're looking at an unfunded amount of $33,000. However, what we also have to consider is, we're also have to look at the school's security details that we're paying $55,000 a year. We also have to look at the school crossing guards that we're paying almost $50,000, and the school safety specialists at $98,000. You know, that's $236,000 that we're going to have to pull out of reserves or out of a general fund.
That's assuming that all of what you're saying, the sheriff would accept. And Mr. Dodd, the sheriff has already said no?
But first, is it something that we'll accept? I mean, would we be willing to go, and, and I know we've seen the figures presented, and I talked to Ms. Wilson, and we ran these figures, and she told me we were going to be under 3% if we were to, if we were to keep everything as is, we'd be under 3%.
And here comes the realtor side of me, because I spent 20 years with people trying to move into our district, and the first thing they ask about is our school system. And when you dip into your reserves and you're done with that, your bond issue's down, and maybe our kids are still scoring A's on all their tests. But when they find out that you've not been keeping that reserved, you're going to get some flack, and people are going to look at our school system and say, "Maybe we shouldn't move it." So I'm, I'm not willing to go into the reserves. I'm looking for other options so that we can be mandated and we have a person in our schools by August 1st. And I think, I'm hesitant to say that we can deal, because we can't deal. We've been waiting how long? And you've got no agreement, and I know, and I admire your efforts, and I thank you so much for doing this, that you haven't really got an answer from. I seem to be nothing on his part. And I think the man may is on us. It's not on him.
We still don't have a total cost.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but we still do not have a total cost. What it will cost the taxpayers of Citrus County, whether through this, through however agencies you want to blend this, we still, all we have is what is being stated by the sheriff's agency of what they believe our cost or the bill that he wants to bill us for. I have a difficult time sitting here saying that I will agree or not agree to something when I still don't know what the total cost is. And again, I'm not just talking about the total cost of Citrus County schools. What is the total cost? I think we owe it to our community to define what that total cost is. And Mr. Bishop, I'm not asking for something that I think that if the sheriff's office is stating that these are what he believes are what it will cost to operate and meet 7026, respectfully, I'm just saying, what will that cost?
And I just reviewed my, the most recent notes I have. I do not have a comprehensive look at that. I don't have, I don't have that in front of me. And once again, I'm very hesitant to speak on behalf of the sheriff's partner. I don't want to speak on their numbers, because I think I'd be running the risk of misinforming you. So unfortunately, I don't have a degree of comfortfulness.
I think we do. When, when we're being asked to look at our reserves, I think we need to have a total cost. I think we need to put all of our reserves on the table. I think the board of county commission, I know that theirs are a public record, but I think we need to get a public record for that. We should have a reserve number of what the sheriff has in his budget for reserves. We can certainly provide ours. I think it was 3.1 was what our reserves are right now, under the $877,000 that we've already offered. That, to the best of my knowledge, we have not heard anything back on.
And here's one other thing that I heard when we were with the VOCC. Sheriff was asking us to fund a 12-month SRO. And I had a problem with his defense of it. It was a training and a vacation. And my problem with that is, we have a 10-month, 180-day school attendance. We have, and our SROs have, a week at Thanksgiving. They have two weeks at Christmas. They have a spring break. They have, for professional development, we do our teachers. We have one day, so those, the SROs could be trained on those days. We're training our teachers. We have half-days. So I still have a tremendous problem with him saying that we have to pay 12-month salary for somebody that's only working for us 180 days. And I saw no budget at all. Let me write that in here.
Yesterday, Mr. Bishop and some of my staff had represented the sheriff's office. The numbers that Mr. Bishop shared, if you want to get on the first line?
Yes, ma'am.
Was the numbers that they shared yesterday. And we discussed them. We talked about some options, but they were, three of them said that these were the numbers that they would need, that they believed that they needed to staff our schools in their county. And you look at the bottom number, that $609,000 overall from the proposal they gave us up to this date. So what we need to know before we leave tonight is, how much money are you willing to give or not to the $877? And if we're supposed to come back to your options? If we're supposed to come back to your options? your options, I need to schedule a workshop on May twenty-second, because May twenty-second, we need to make a decision. Because Sandy brought it up in the timeline, and if we can offer whatever amount of money, tell the sheriff's office, as he's hoping to give them, and if they can make it work or not make it work, to a one-eyed officer, because we are, I believe the intent also is to have an officer on campus.
Absolutely.
Whether it's an SRO officer or a safe school officer. So if we know that that's what our intent is, and we all agree that we would like an SRO on campus, then we need to know, we need to decide what we're gonna do, bring it back to you on May twenty-second, and move forward, but I can't, Mr. Bishop, anybody cannot contact sheriff's office more until we know what our number is that we're gonna offer to the officer on our school. And they can either tell us they can make it, or they can't make it, and have another meeting for a minute.
And, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, but, but if, if the sheriff is to say, "I can't make it work," then what, what do we go, where do we go to from there?
And that's why I would need, you ought to tell me, if we're told that we can't make this work, then we would have to bring you back options on May twenty-second or one on May twenty-second.
Those options would include our, those other choices, I'm sure.
Whatever choices we would be offering.
Well, yes, ma'am, yes.
Do you have the figure, two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars increase?
That was from, that was from the figures that they gave us on one of their first forms, on one of the first sheets that they gave us. The operating, is that, do you have that, is that what you, yeah?
But with some of those that's already...
The existing, that's, for the existing, for the existing, yeah.
Why is there an increase?
Well, they're increasing the operating, they want a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, five hundred, five, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars for operating, and they want a hundred and twenty-two thousand, three fifty-two for capital.
Well, what are they using?
Well, we, we've never paid capital. So they're billing capital, and they're billing, they've increased the operating from eighteen thousand, eight nineteen to one fifty-six, five twelve. And they have, I guess, I think they gave you, Mr. Bishop, didn't they, the cost of an officer, I think they have mileage in there for, and gas expense, and...
Yes, sir, very on, early on in this process, they did provide a breakdown of salary benefits only, and then the capital costs associated with, with that, I'm certain I can look through my binder, if you give me a minute, I can find that, and share that information with you, if you'd like. But in the meantime, I did put on your, in front of you there, two letters that we received today. If you go to the second page, let me direct your attention to the second page first, if you don't mind. This is a letter I received today, shortly before two o'clock this afternoon. Basically, just to summarize, it's from the General Counsel of the Florida Sheriff's Association, which, if you go through and read, will, is his opinion that the deficit of funds available for the coverage of SROs in our schools rests solely on the shoulders of the school board, not the sheriff nor the county commission, I think that's what you're reading there. On the first page, you'll see Troy Frank from the Department Association of District Superintendents. It is the position of the FADS that they do not agree with, with that assertion, and that there should be a partnership between the two entities, so. As you're looking, reading that, I'll, I'll look for that documentation.
So, so it says May the second, you just got it, is that correct, Mr. Bishop?
I apologize, I apologize.
It says May the second, but you just got it, is that correct?
I can confirm that I received it today about two o'clock, yes, ma'am.
Did, did you receive this because it was solicited or unsolicited, or, under what reasoning did we get it, or did all districts get it?
I can't speak to that, I can only share with you...
I mean, I'm just curious as to why this was sent to us, whether today, of all days?
I, I can't answer that, sir, I can only share with you that I received it today.
Mr. Bradshaw says here in this particular opinion, the term of the funding for SROs, but it doesn't, I don't see anything here about capital. I don't see anything here about additional managers, maintenance, administration. So, I mean, there, there still becomes that question as to, that's still a level of service, is it not?
I will tell you that I received it about the same time that Mr. Bishop did. I've read it about three times, I've made notes all over, I disagree with some of the conclusions that Mr. Evans made. I can't really get into, you know, run to get into what, what those, what those are at this particular time. I think sometimes it's, people have a fundamental misunderstanding of how schools or districts are funded, as part of it discusses, you know, they cited there the safe schools allocation, although the, that section there, starting July one of two thousand and eighteen, the last part that I've repeated, I've stated to you on several occasions about any additional funds, is not in the bill, is not in the statute, starting July one, two thousand and eighteen, so it basically amended this year's, the two thousand and seventeen statute, it's not in the two thousand and eighteen statute. And the other part, in talking about us increasing our mileage and things, we all know that we get a directive from the, from the state on what we can, what our mileage rate is, we have a one-point-five discretionary mileage rate, and then the other portions that they're talking about is the local, you know, a local referendum to increase mileage, it can't be over, it can't be, I don't know what our mileage rate is now and everything, but it can't be over ten, so I don't know how, how much of an increase that is, but that is going to the voters and asking them for a mileage rate increase, which we did that one time, and were successful with our discretionary, back when you could go to the voters and ask for our discretionary to be increased, I believe. Outside of that, we, the second time we tried to do that, we were voted down, and the sales tax, we were voted down on that. So, you know, we don't have the discretion, like the board of county commissions, board of county commissioners do, to take a vote here and say, we're gonna increase our mileage. Our mileage rate is either set, or we have to go to a voter referendum, you know, to increase it. So, if we have a workshop on May twenty-second, or whatever, I'll be more, I can go through this letter with you and give you more of a legal opinion, but I received it about the same time that Mr. Bishop did, and it had to be here at three o'clock.
You're saying there's issues that you already see with their, this opinion?
There are, yes, there are some issues that I see with the opinion, and I'm sure that Ms. Frank, who is an excellent attorney, and is the attorney for FADS, has issues, issues with it also. You know, I think, I think what, the one thing, and she pointed out in her brief response, is that, you know, the law says that we shall partner, you know, with law enforcement agencies. So, you know, that is not discretionary, I know Ms. Powers and me have gone round and round on shall, I mean, before, but, but shall is shall, you know, so, and then, and then you would get into, you know, different things as far as the funding aspect, you know, how it's gonna get funded, right?
I mean, this is about, you know, the policing of our children, the protection of our, our children, I mean, this is not just a school board responsibility, this is a, this is a policing responsibility. And the sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer of the county, and this is a feather in his cap, it has been, because we have had an excellent school resource officer program. We have an award-winning school resource officer program. So this has got to be, all of us in this together, as a community, you know, working to make sure our kids are safe and our teachers are protected, and that we're, we've already talked about in our, in our closed session, those things that we're having to do, to look at, at training and drills and all those things that we have to do, and this is a critical part of, of the whole protection plan, and it's, it's a community-wide, Mrs. Council, you mentioned about, from the real estate side, people want...
Look at our schools.
Our school districts that are, that are high academic achieving and safe schools. So let me just ask you this, board members, if we were to look at an amount around a million dollars, knowing that we're only getting nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars from safe school allocation, and knowing that we're having to pay other amounts, like security details, and crossing guards, and a school safety specialist, knowing that we're gonna have to take that out of the general fund, we're gonna have to cut other, as Mr. Mullins said, other positions or programs, but knowing that that would be the case, could we go with the, you know, what I came up with was nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven oh six, would you all be willing to consider that? To put that on the table, so that the superintendent can go back to the sheriff and says, this is what the board can do?
Mr. Bishop, how much money are we going to, how much money have we budgeted for to address hardening with the current budgets that we're gonna be dealing with?
We're still awaiting the parameters by which the state defines hardening, you know, for this type of event. Right now, we're trying to save every penny we can to hopefully meet the mandate as, as we get it, but we have yet to receive the parameters.
So do you anticipate right now that we have enough capital dollars to meet many of the hardening requirements or expectations, large expectations that we're gonna have? Or are we gonna have to go into our funds?
In fairness, in order for me to best answer that question, I would have to know the parameters by which the state sets, but I will, I can tell you this, we have had to alter how we do preventative maintenance, and had to scrutinize even more so than we ever had before, any projects that we do in our schools. So what that, what that part lays into is, maybe our parking lots aren't gonna get resealed every five years, every seven years, maybe it's gonna be every ten or twelve years, maybe our schools aren't gonna get painted every seven, eight, nine years, maybe it's gonna be twelve, fourteen, fifteen years. So I think, I think that's probably the best way for me to answer that question, is that we're having to...
We've been doing that, right? If I, oh, we've been having to do that since we all...
We've been having to do that to make it work right now, and we're also doing, trying to save every penny we possibly can, because we don't know what lies ahead of us in terms of partnering our schools.
And we're not buying extra buses and as many anymore, because we've had to extend that cycle of life.
We've actually had to forecast out the age of our buses for, up until, I think, twenty-thirty, we have, we've extrapolated that data, know how old they're gonna be, and to make sure that we can replace them in much smaller increments because of affordability issues we, we foresee having. But, if you don't mind, you asked about the, you asked about the information regarding salary and capital expenses and what have you, I do have that here in front of me, I was able to locate it. We provided very early on in the process, a very detailed breakdown of the costs associated with SROs for a non-supervisor SRO, salary and benefits alone are seven-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And then I'm just gonna go through and call...
Which is the number that I used?
Yes, sir, that's it, that's correct, that is, yep. Now, let's go through and share with you the other costs associated, and I'm gonna go down and read on it, I'll just give you grand total, 'cause I can't add this all up in my head that quick. The new higher physical and psychological test, and annual training of forty hours, a cell phone with a personal hotspot, insurance, liability, bonds, statutory death, vehicle insurance, annual office supplies, then it goes into uniforms and gear, breaks it down into uniforms, duty, duty gear, supplies, bullet vest, trauma, active shooter, I know I'm wearing that, weapons, ammunition, AEDs, laptops, then it gets into the vehicle cost of four tours on a five-year replacement cycle, equipment to outfit the vehicle on a five-year replacement cycle, the vehicle tag, the mobile radio, annual fuel cost based on seventeen miles per gallon, on the average, annual average of fifteen thousand miles per, per year, at two dollars and sixty cents a gallon, oils and fuels, and the maintenance, that total is fifty-six thousand, four hundred dollars per non-supervisory SRO position. So you add those things together, and I think you'll come to a one thirty-two, two oh one for the first year, that's what we were providing early on.
If we did that, why wouldn't we just then start our own force? If we're spending, if we're talking about having to reimburse that money, then why wouldn't we just then have our own police department? I mean, I'm not even necessarily thinking that's an option that we wanted to consider, but at some point, if we're expending all of that money...
Right. Well, certainly that's, that's the will of the board, and I want to live that, this was given to me very early on in the, in the conversation, I'm talking many weeks ago. Now, what I presented to you today was, and I wanted to say, to make this sound cavalier or what have you, but the reality is, I didn't even, I needed to know a bottom dollar that I was trying to bring to you guys today, to say, this is what the sheriff's department's asking for, in order to have SROs come to start the next school year in each of our schools. That's why we presented the one-point-three. The breakdown, the how, all that number, to me, is immaterial. If they tell us that's what we have to give, I gotta come to you and say, what do you want me to do? And I, Mr. Kennedy, I hope, I hope I didn't run the risk of being cavalier to it, that's what we're at.
I, again, my question still is, how much is the sheriff's version to meet seventy-twenty-six going to cost in total to the taxpayers of Citrus County?
And unfortunately, I, I don't have that information.
We can't vote on it, we don't have full information.
Okay.
And my, my problem is, with all these capital things for the sheriff's office, I mean, really, if, if we had our own police department, and we hired our own security officers and deputies, they really don't need a car. I have a problem paying a car, I have a problem paying twelve months, when we pay our teachers ten months, and people are, are a little bit uninformed, because they say, oh, no, they get checks every month, they get three checks in May. But I started teaching when you only got one check, and you got it in September, and the last check in June, and you didn't get any checks in July and August. And we had little teachers, especially single ones that were brand-new, coming, and they had five dollars left in their pocket when they started school. So the school is accommodating, but we're paying our teachers a ten-month contract, and we spread their checks over to help them budget, and so it's, it's still only ten months. I have a problem paying a security officer, an SRO, those extra two months when they're doing other things for the sheriff's office, they're not taking care of our schools, they're not in our, taking care of our kids.
Well, that's where the forty-five percent came in, but that was sadly rejected, so...
I know, but he stopped at that.
That was...
So I'm thinking in, in the workshop, what I'm planning, I'm doing is, I'm gonna fight for ten-month pay, and I don't know why they need a car, because they're on campus, that's where they're supposed to be, that's their job description, to be on campus, and if we have a problem on campus, we can call nine-one-one and get a car.
All right. I want to throw in a little commercial here, I'm gonna put Ms. Joseph on the, Ms. Smith's story on the spot. We met with the CCA and some of their leadership the other day, and I would like to ask Vicki to come up and give a little bit of her opinion, because she's been, and she will be more involved with her budget, she's seen the numbers tonight, she's a sitting teacher, and she represents our teachers in our district, and I would, I'd like to hear from Vicki on, you know, if we do get the fund balance, we get under our three percent, she knows that we do the best we can with salaries and those kind of things, and I hate to pitch on the spot, but I do believe that we all have similar thoughts, but I would like to hear from Ms. Smith. She was on the way there. But I think that's important.
Okay, um, excuse me.
Say your name.
Victoria Smith.
Just watch it up.
Citrus County Education Association president. Um, yes, we did meet, and we know that you guys have been very, we look at the budget as well, and we know that you have been really fair, and everything that you come to us with is exactly what you have. So we know there's not any hidden money anywhere, so we know, we understand that this is not gonna be enough money to fund this. We also don't believe in the Guardian program in the sense of having weapons to our staff. Hiring other people, yes, that, we understand that, you know, hire ex-officers, retired officers, ex-marines, military, things like that, that's, we don't mind that at all, but we really don't want to have guns in the hands of school staff. We think that you guys should try again for a half-cent sales tax, and we would, we would work on it, we would sit there and push a little bit more, but you really need to do it sooner and not later. And if you wanna go in that direction, CCA will be behind you, working on it, and we will sit there and fight for it. But this is something that we need, we do need to have something happening to where we have every school protected, but there's not the money there. And cutting positions, you're going to be hurting, then your school grade's gonna go down, cutting...
You're gonna be hurting children.
Exactly. You're going, if you cut, you know, projects, again, you're hurting the kids, you really are. I mean, we need those. You guys have been really good about not having positions cut, or having other things cut, when we've been in trouble before, when Duke Energy closed. So, I mean, this board and... So, I mean, this board and superintendent has been wonderful at it, and I know we're gonna get through this, but we need to go out to the public and let them know that we need to do something.
We're still on a timeline, and I don't, we don't have time to do it. Yeah, we don't have time.
I know, I know. I, I don't know what else to say, except for we understand, we do, we understand that the budget, we get it, we understand that you're not gonna be below what you wanna be. So, I mean, if there's anything we can do to help, we will. But I'm hoping that no positions or anything else gets cut, and maybe you guys could think of an alternative plan, but not putting guns in the staff's hands.
No guns in the staff, that's not gonna happen.
Is that all right? I'm not so sick.
Thank you. So, well, let me get back to my, what I've, what I've looked at, I mean, just so the superintendent knows, what, is the board willing to add? I mean, I, I look back at the letter now, we had said 877,315.
That's it.
Ironically.
That's it.
Well, let me, let me just finish, let me just finish. You know, if we look at 50% of personnel cost and $60,000 in operating, it puts us at 987,706. So we're about $100,000 off. Now, and that's if, if the sheriff would be willing to move with a plan like this. But at least it's more, I mean, that's, you know, when I look at what it's gonna cost is because I look at the school safety, school security details, we pay deputies to work extra duty events, when I look at school crossing guards, this new school safety specialist that is mandated, and those are costs that we're gonna have to cover. So, to me, I would be willing to, to take this on this first year in order to get the positions of school resource officers in all of our locations. And if the sheriff can't make it work with this, then he could make it work if he looked at other programs, a hybrid-type program, and we would ask him to do that. And if, I'm not sure, I mean, you know, that's what your staff will have to work on if, if the sheriff does not want to look at options for us.
I'm not ready to make the sheriff another offer over and above what we did in the letter that you didn't respond to.
Well, I don't think we need to send it to the sheriff. I think that this board can, could ask the superintendent to send a letter to the sheriff stating the same amount with this, with the conditions that, that you're saying. Or we have to then say, we have to ask the sheriff then to look at a guardian program, and when I say guardian program, I agree, I'm talking about adding security personnel as part of a blended system. So he would have to agree to that. And if not, then I think this board is, is gonna be forced to have to look at the law enforcement agency itself.
Well, this.
Those are the three options.
What I have is, I think is defendable, though. You see, I think we can go and argue that this is a defendable plan, to say, these are your figures, these are the numbers that you've given us, and we're, we're gonna increase operating a whole lot, we're gonna exchange capital, we're not gonna be paying the capital, and we can present this, which is not, I mean, which is doable, I think. I mean, I really think it's doable for us to say, this is the last, or this is, this is the best way we can meet the need for an SRO in every school.
Mr. Dodd, I thought we'd want to, in the past, or let me say this, my concern has always been about telling law enforcement how they operate. We've never told our sheriffs in the past how to operate. We said, this is the amount of money we have and we can afford, this is the level of service that we'd like to be able to do. Now the state's told us the level of service, they've given us the money, we can provide that to the sheriff and say, this is the amount of money, and then you can decide how that I don't, I, I don't want to be telling the sheriff whether he replaces his cars every five years, every two years, every 10 years, any more than I want him telling me when I'm gonna have to do my buses. So that, to me, is a dollar amount to cover the schools, here's the amount of money that we have.
But we're gonna have to assume some costs here, I mean, this is a mandate we're all having to deal with. I mean, the county commission is having to look at it, I think they're willing to pitch in hopefully up to $100,000. Then let's do the same thing, that's what we're saying, this is another $100,000, and then maybe the sheriff will come through.
We don't have a total cost yet. You're basically saying an unknown amount of money.
No, we're using, we're using the figures that he's given us on the salaries and benefits.
But we have yet to hear what his total cost.
Mr. Bishop, didn't he give you that, that letter? I, I thought that, that's what, I, I thought Major Lindhart gave you a letter, or not a letter, gave you some information, I thought it was on there.
What I have from Major Lindhart yesterday, I thought their total cost was over $2.5 billion. And see, that's why I'm hesitant to say that, because I can look at a different station that's close to $4 million, and I'll be more glad to share it, just give me one second.
So between $2.5 and $4 million?
No, no, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
Please understand, what I'm saying is this, in one section up here, it says, 2.504, $2.5 million, and down here, it has a total, another total cost of 888,661, and then it has some cost sharing on our part. So I don't, I don't have a high degree of confidence to be able to share this with you. I would a whole lot rather someone from the sheriff's department provide this to you, because once again, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of the sheriff's department this evening, I'm not gonna do that. This is their form, I can tell you, I took very clear notes, I underlined, highlighted, circled, did all my little scratching, so I can tell you what they told us for our part only. I cannot speak on what the total cost is for the sheriff's department.
And, and Mr. Dodd, I would say this, first of all, I, I would agree with this board, you have been amazing at trying to communicate with the sheriff in reaching out to him, meeting with him, and going out of your way to try and bridge this. And I don't say that we shouldn't continue to do that. I have no problem if what you're saying is a dollar amount, and then you can, if you want to explain it to him as to where we've come up with that dollar amount. What I'm reluctant to is, is that I think that if we are going to come to any agreement with the sheriff's office, it should include that we're funding this to cover these schools. How he goes about doing that, I think that's a slippery slope for all of us to get into the details of every aspect of that. Now, if you wanna say to him, listen, this is how we have come up with that dollar, or this is the rationale that we have for that dollar amount, I can agree with, with that understanding, but I don't know that he's gonna ever agree with the way we come up with the numbers. So that's my, that's, I think we're still back on a dollar amount. And if that, and I, and I don't know that I've heard the board say anything different than 877,000.
That's right.
Which was what was, was previously set. Otherwise, then we have to look at a guardian, some type of guardian program with school, save school officers, or then we're gonna have to ask the superintendent to look at other options.
And we've got a good, safe discussion with the school board and the sheriff's office.
But that begins with a total.
It certainly does. You have to know what the goal is. You don't know. You can't discuss anything.
I'm just replying to you, but when you talk about the total, I think that's irrelevant of how much money we need to, that we can afford. Because I agree, I don't think it's our place to let the sheriff know a program he feels that would protect our schools. He's the expert, I expect him, I think that's our expectation for the community, that he would protect the school. I think what we need determines how many dollars we ought to run against the sheriff's office, so that we can take that, send a letter, whatever we need to do, and say, here's the amount of money that I've approved to give for the program, and then wait on a response, and if that doesn't come, then we're done.
And my answer to that is, I would be willing to approve $987,706.
So which teachers are you gonna cut?
I'm not gonna cut any teachers.
Somebody's gonna have to. And it is very troublesome, you seem to be talking about a figure of $32,000 per officer, and Vicky's sitting over there, and I know she would love to have money for it. You know, we're really struggling with this, because we want the people in education, our education, to be able to have the most they can have, and all of, everything's, take your budget, take your little there.
What's, Mr. Bishop, can you pull up your, your $600,000 difference off your amount?
Yes, just give me a second here.
Now, that figure, though, there are some things in that figure that I think we can So, Ms. Powers, that's the difference right now, 609,000. Okay? That's based on the 877,315. There are some things in here that I understand within.
609,000?
It's, it's after the 7, saving 758,000.
I backed out the, the cost of the, if you go back this, Mr. Dodd, I backed out the cost of the $196,000 for the school, school safety specialist, the extra duty and the...
Right. What I'm saying is, if, if, we take that, we take that off, we budget, we, we pay out the general fund for that. We paid the $50,000, $47,000, and $98,000 out of the general fund. So we can take off almost $200,000 right there.
So then you add $200,000, so you have nine.
So that would put us.
Not the new security officer, not the new security officer.
No, that's security details.
No, no, no. Can you go back? The safe, secure, this, this school safe specialist is 98,000. That's not.
Well, that's not allowed.
As a new expense.
But we can use the new money to pay for that.
Is that, do we have that, Mr. Bradshaw?
The slide that Annie showed you all that showed the 3.1% undesigned fund balance, includes these numbers. That, that fund balance sheet shows that for us to get back to where we need to be to be close to 4%, we've gotta go out and cut about $200,000 out of our budget as of today, before I give the sheriff's office.
Oh, but, but that goes back to, is the 758,000 or the 877,000? That was what I thought, the 877,000.
Correct, correct.
Which means if we're getting funded at 956,000 for safe schools and SROs, or 7026 and safe schools, that's $954,000.
Mr. Bishop's slide here, we're already, the, the 877, we're already over the 758 that we're.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say.
So any more that we give, we, you know, decide to give, we're having to hit our fund balance even more.
That's why I'm saying, in the fund balance right now.
We're going above 3.
You have 877,000, and you've covered the safe school specialist.
Correct, yes.
So we're actually paying 877,000 plus 98,000.
Which, but they figured, they've already figured that in the fund balance, so this is what they're.
They have, but I'm saying, what we're saying is, we're having to go into our fund balance.
Right, that's right.
To do that. So right now, we're not 877,000, we're actually 976,000 already.
No, because we're already paying, we've already budgeted to pay for those items out of the general fund. Isn't that right, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, we're already hitting the fund balance for 120,000 based on our current, our current offer on the table right now. We're already eating 120,000.
Which would mean, that's over and above the 954,000.
Yes, sir, over and above the allocation, we're eating 120,000.
Right. So that's a million and seven?
877 plus.
Plus the.
So that's, that's well over the 900 that you're suggesting.
Well, but the bottom line is this, that these are things that we're gonna have to budget for, we're gonna have to take these out of the general fund.
The general fund, they are too.
Well, we're already paying the crossing guards and extra duty detail out of the general fund, are we not?
Currently, this year in 16, or 17, 18.
We had to do that because our safe school funding got cut last year, wasn't that the reason why? So we've already had to do that, we've already had to cover the 50,000 and the 47,000, we've already covered that out of the general fund.
But you are, but you're not the 900, you're, you're not the 98,000.
That's correct. And what I'm saying is, we would have to budget to cover that out of the general fund, or we'd have to take it out of our undesigned fund balance. That's the cost, I'm telling you, in talking with the sheriff, as far off as he is, the, the 877,000 is so far away from where his figures are.
That 877 is a 12-month pay for the deputies plus the capital.
Right, well, he cannot do 10 months, I mean, unless he goes into a special hybrid program where he hires, you know, reserve, retired, whatever type officers to work those positions on a part-time basis, which he has said he's not willing to do.
But he's working those, those deputies during the summer when we're paying or participating in their salary, and he's using them.
Well, I know, Ms. Counts, but the problem there is that we do have an issue with summer school that we're gonna have to address. We're gonna have to address that now. And so there may not be as much time off that the sheriff has for those, for, I mean, for a percentage of those, those positions. So, I'm just trying to say, if we really want school resource officers, then we, we add an additional $100,000, we look at the county commission to say, hey, come in now, we're doing this, and we say to the sheriff, all right, we all wanna make this work, now can't you make it work for us? And then if he says no, then we have to do something different. And I really don't wanna go there. I really don't. I'm, I'm hoping he'll say, this is it, I've either gotta make the figures work and keep my SRO program intact, or there's gonna be a different, it's gonna have a different face. So what I'm saying is, I'm willing to take an additional $100,000 to tell the sheriff, this is what we can make work.
So we've got no response on 877,000?
No, no.
Nothing, no, no official response, no. Please be aware, another $100,000 is gonna currently put us at 2.99%.
Which would mean if we have to cut somewhere else.
If we give them another $100,000. I just want you to be aware, I ran those numbers based on where we are at right now for next year's budget. We add another $100,000, we're at 2.99% fund balance.
But we're still at the beginning of the budgeting process, so we know that there's gonna have to be some things we're gonna have to look at. We can bring it to the 3%, I have no, I have no doubt we can bring it within the law. We're gonna violate our policy.
We're not just violating our policy, we are trying to take the very last bit of our reserves to fund something that I, I don't know that the sheriff's gonna anywhere come close to agreeing to. Where are their fund balances? Are they gonna be at 2.9%?
Well, I can tell you this, the sheriff cannot keep a fund balance because he's a constitutional officer, he's funded by the county commission. So all his money, any leftover money in his budget goes back to the county commission.
And the county commission's fund balance?
So the county commission has a fund balance.
And it's a pretty healthy fund balance, if I recall. It's more, it's a lot more than 2.9. Now, I'm not suggesting that that's the direction that it must go, but at some point, again, we are not a taxing authority that can take this mandate and fund it through a tax increase. We do not have that authority.
But if we want school resource officers, we're gonna have to, there's gonna be a price to pay.
Like buying cars?
No, I, no, the cars aren't even on, the cars aren't in the deal. The capital that we're trading, that's what I'm saying, the sheriff's gotta agree with this, because we're not gonna pay for the capital. Maybe he can pay for it out of guardian money if that comes down the pipe, but we're not gonna pay for that because it, in, in my view, our, what we're exchanging is, equals out.
Doug, the thing of it is, is we, we haven't even started to replace many of the positions we've cut years ago. We've got, we've got people that are doing two and three and four times what they should be doing to take up, to kind of make up for the people that are gone, that aren't here anymore. But we did not replace.
Just here's one. Yeah, really, for the educational institution, we want good teachers, we don't want war teachers to be, and by doing stuff like this, since all we're gonna do is just pat around their backs, saying, we'll go hard, get hired another person.
Well, I think that we're gonna have to look at the elementary school SRO program. I mean, we're gonna have to look, if we take on all of the responsibility, we can't save enough money with just three, three positions. We're gonna have to look at all the, all the elementary schools and put some type of a hybrid position in there. And those people are still gonna have to pick up the phone and call 911 when there is a crime on campus, or when there's a Baker Act. And I know from a SAC meeting I was just in yesterday, they praise the SRO who is there full-time now. That was at Emory's Primary School, and at Central Ridge Elementary School last year, That was at Emory's Primary School, and at Central Ridge Elementary School last year, the SAC committee was very happy to have a full-time SRO, a deputy sheriff on campus.
And I agree that they do, I think we all do, but I would almost guarantee that if we said to them that in order to have that SRO, we're going to have to cut this program, that program, and this position, that's not with them having to have that placed in front of them.
One of the papers, someone in town asked me, oh, well, we can do this, we'll just take and increase the size of the classroom. Have more students, well, no, change the law, we'll have more students in the classroom. Then everything will be okay. Right.
Well, as, I mean, in negotiations, I just see we've got to come back with something more in order to have a good faith effort that, you know, we're going to have to sacrifice, but the county commission and the sheriff are going to have to make the same sacrifice for the good of the community.
Well, wouldn't the 100,000 be like Ms. Counts said, if we only paid them for 180 days?
I know, but the sheriff can't, I mean, there's two dilemmas there. One is the sheriff can't hire a full-time deputy who's only going to work 10 months out of the year unless he is a part-time officer, and the sheriff's going to have to enter into a lot of different programs that he doesn't want to enter into.
But that deals with a percentage, and I think that's probably how it's been handled in the past, I have no idea, but then the percentages need to be dropped. We need to pay less than 45% of what he's saying is the cost of an SRO and a car.
And I agree with you, Ms. Counts, I think we should pay 45%.
I know, she should pay less than 45%.
Well, but I, Mr. Dunn, I would be with you, that I, I would be thrilled to be having that conversation right now, but we're not there, and you have made every effort, and I mean, I don't, I know we all do this, we love our SROs, our SROs and our program, we talk about SRO number one, we talk about our SROs, we, I mean, this, this is, right now, we just made our, SRO number one was just made, our Safe Schools Specialist. We voted on that today. We have, your SRO number?
Three.
Your three.
Who's two?
Was Doug's two?
James Morton.
James Morton was two. We'll forget James. The point is, this is our family. These SROs have been embedded into our schools as not just officers, they are our family. Your kid is on the front line, all of your children were on the front line, my children are on the front line, we live this every day. I don't know, I am perplexed by the fact that we have all understood there was only so much money in the past, there is still only so much money.
I'm going to say something too that y'all are both saying that has nothing to do with the money. Whether it's an SRO or a security officer, one gun on our campus is not going to keep any child safe. The relationship that our SROs or our security officers develop with that, I'm thinking of the SRO at my SAC schools, the relationship that they develop with those children that is breaking our hearts right now, keeps our kids safe, relationship with their teachers, and I'm insulted at the fact that we cannot have a discussion in the best interest of our kids in our classrooms.
We want a partnership, that's all we're asking, everyone's do their part, that's all we're asking.
We've known, when we talk about the limitations in money, what law enforcement has said, including last year, was we're going to still keep kids safe. That's the money that you have, we're going to figure it out. Where is it?
And Joey Frank said, shall partner.
I think that we...
We've had, we've had a good discussion, I mean, I think, I mean...
But I think the superintendent still needs something. Do you know?
I need a dollar amount, 877.
Would we be willing to go with the entire Safe School funding amount of 954, 571 and give him the entire, I know that was mentioned by one of you...
I would absolutely, if you, if you want to make that recommendation, or if someone is in the effort only of, no, not only, in the effort to, to positively...
Right, that figure is the third calculation plus what the state's going to send us for the SRO security.
That's, that's a total, that's a total compa, that's a combination of third calculation and the final conference report, 954, 571.
And if we did that and we said, this is a good faith effort, this is everything.
Can I make this?
I will, I'm...
I was just going to say, if we're sitting here talking about staying with 877 or going to 954, I would like to encourage the board to entertain that, because then we're a few thousand dollars away from up in our offer, and if we can settle it for that, I think that would be in the best interest of everybody.
I would like to make a motion that we take 100% of the Safe Schools allocation and the 7026, third calculation, which I believe is approximately 954, if you put the slide up, I'll read it.
571.
571, to offer as the sheriff to cover SROs at 22 schools for next school year.
Would you please put a deadline on that motion that we have a rapid response within so many days?
Tell me, and I'll, I'm happy to do that. Is 10 days, is 10 days reasonable for us to provide, I guess my answer is, is can we provide a letter to, can we have the superintendent draft a letter to?
We can provide a letter tomorrow, we'll provide a letter tomorrow morning.
And then if we don't...
I love, I think we have to have a response within at least a period for us to, to act by May 15th, so that we can, and the reasoning for that is so that we can act at the next board meeting. The other alternative, so that would be my motion, I'm sorry.
In one minute, is that, well, we'll tell you, we already have, we're looking into several options when we down this path. I know Mr. Bradshaw, his conference call about the police force, I know Ms. Seritch has been in touch with several districts, and Joey Frank will be sending out information to all superintendents within the next couple of days about other options if we cannot come to a agreement. So if we can get a response in hand by the 15th, then we will know at that point to further go from federal.
May I ask one just thing too, part of that?
Yes, ma'am, that's fine, that just gives them seven days to respond because the day's the eighth.
Six days.
I'm sorry, six days because the days are already...
But not even working days, we can...
Okay. Certainly we can, we'll certainly do that, but I want to go back, there was a conversation or a thought that we may need a board workshop at the end of the month, are we doing that? So I can make sure staff's prepared to bring information, I mean, what's the will of the board?
May we say?
May we say?
Now, if they accept the offer, we can always resend.
Absolutely.
Resend.
And I want to make sure that I'm clear for staff purposes, the purpose of the workshop would be then to come back to the board, probably share with the board the response that we got on this latest offer of 954, 571. In addition to that, if the offer was rejected, to present to the board various options or alternatives to make this happen.
I'm going to, and after this, I'm going to, maybe if it helps, I'd like to make one more added motion separate from this, and you'll understand why.
All right, hold on, because we don't have a second yet, I want to make sure I understand the motion.
I want to be clear about something.
Okay. So let, wait, let's get the motion in the second first. So Mr. Kenny, restate your motion, please.
Motion is to, to provide to the sheriff's department 954,571,000, which is $71,000, which is the third calculation...
Just 100% of the...
Just 100% of the allocation, of the Safe Schools allocation and 7026, to fund 22 schools' coverage of SROs for the next school year.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kenny, a second, hold on.
18, 2019 school year.
Okay, all right, okay.
I know.
That is correct, thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. So the motion is to fund it for the 2018-19 school year, which starts July 1st, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's, is that, that is a motion, right? And Ms., Ms. Bryant, you second that motion?
I did.
Okay, so we have that motion and the second, now other discussion, assemble?
I just wanted to clarify an officer on each campus.
22, an officer on each campus.
I also wanted to clarify that you would be under the deadline to, for May 15th.
May 15th is the deadline in order for us to be able to, so that we can workshop, come back to the workshop.
We'll just put that in the letter.
And then I...
Put that in the letter.
I have one question for the board and the, and the chair. While I believe the, I mean, the letter should be drafted from the superintendent because that's what we're doing. Is there value to you meeting with the sheriff and delivering it?
We can discuss that.
I would just say that at least as, as this board member, I would be open to if, if that's a value to go ahead with.
A letter can come from the chairman and the board, that's on the...
I think if you're going to give a six-day deadline, you need to be number of the...
In the morning.
Yeah, then let the superintendent execute that, but I have no problem, you know, giving you the, you know, the board saying that, you know, we have no problem encouraging you to have any conversation on that.
All those favor.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second, and now we need to have a vote on that. Is everyone clear on the motion and the second? We're all clear on this, right? The full calculation, the 954, 571, for 22 schools for school resource officers. Okay? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes five to zero. Very good.
Can we have one more discussion?
Yes, ma'am. If it deals with safety and security...
If it's a 12-month salary, then it should include knowing that we're going to have to go to a summer school because of the change in high schools, then that, that should include summer school coverage, 12-month coverage.
Yeah, I...
They've always covered the school as long as... And I don't want to be charged overtime to cover a summer school.
Mr. Chair, I'd be like, I'd like if I can to make one more either motion or request. If we learn that the sheriff is not willing to accept that, or is willing to then be open to a guardian program...
Okay.
That would be for the intent of us hiring Safe Schools officers as a blended program, not as a replacement, as a blended program. I would like to have us ask him for that to be reconsidered.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to...
If we need to make it in a motion, if we need to have that directive, my thing is, is we have kind of stated that we're, it's off the table, and I think we're, we need to ask the sheriff to, that if he won't, if he's not going to accept the 954,000...
To look at offering as a guardian type program.
That we need to, to have a guardian program for us to have a blended.
But I...
I don't know if you need to make that in motion, because, you know, if it's a sheriff will do a guardian program, you're going to hire people to act as a student guardian, there's going to be a lot of work and job description and things like that, that's going to have to go in there that you're going to have to agree to and he's going to have to agree to, so I think that's...
But right now, he's been, he's, yeah, I've under the impression he's not willing to even consider one.
Right, but I think you could tell him that you, the board has a consensus that they would consider doing that.
Well, then maybe that's what we need to do, is to make a, is to make either a consensus or would the board entertain looking at, at a guardian program for added, not for already existing? I'm sorry?
Not including existing.
Not incl...
Is the guardian program like hiring our retired...
It could be any of those.
Yeah, it could be any of those, because I was still confused between guardian and...
Because I think right now, we have said at this point that, well, we do want it to be SROs, but if at the point that we can't get there, we need to be open to this, and you ask this to be, I'm ready to be open to this conversation.
And I think you're stating that you all are open to that idea, it's better than asking him to reconsider it, because to me, that's us telling him again what to do with this.
And that's fine.
So I also want to make sure I'm clear, are we saying that we're going to solicit the sheriff in the event that the 954, 571 is not something, if that's rejected, we're going to solicit him for a guardian program, hybrid, something of the sort? Is it the will of the board to include that verbiage in the letter we're sending over tomorrow, or you wanted two separate letters?
Yeah, that's why I made it separate.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I'm thinking, for clarification, I, again, I'm not talking about a replacement to SROs, only as a blended option to get us through it.
And question, why can't it be one letter to say, here's the amount of money the board has approved for us to report with? Because it's been very clear, the sheriff and I both have said we develop a guardian program, and I think at this point, in the same letter, we can say, however, the board has agreed, has put a consensus, that they would be open to a guardian program, not to include current school boards.
Certainly we can do that if that's the will of the board.
I have no problem with that.
That's the will of the board, we certainly can do that, but in fairness to the guardian program, when it was first rolled out, it was, it was going to be teachers and staff and that, whatever. So I think the guardian program has morphed into something bigger and better, there's more...
Or a hybrid, you mentioned hybrid something.
So I think in fairness, I know, I know that was your position early, but I think there's options out there.
Are you clear?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Had a good discussion, board members. Okay, so next up is we're going to know to our attorney and Willie Lenders.
I don't have, I think I've done with them, the second question I would have, are we going to have a workshop special meeting on the 22nd?
Oh, no.
Because you're going to have, it's going to have to be noticed.
Why don't we schedule it and we can always cancel it?
That's fine.
I mean, if we, Kenny, if we schedule it, knowing that the, that the staff can do it, you can at least get the notices out and then you can pull it up there.
But if we find out by the 15th that they have accepted or not, then they can advertise it on Tuesday, so we have time to look at it. Get out, get out to the...
Well, because when you say through to you on Tuesday, you can respond on Tuesday at 4:30 or 4:59.
When's the latest learned?
Usually it's about...
It's to be placed out to you before noon.
It usually does on Tuesday. But to publish that, something a week or usually do it on Tuesday or Wednesday? Okay.
It's in the head file, we publish it a week before that.
Right, so I would just call it a special meeting, you can always talk about everything and I'll go on something if you wanted to, that would be a good jam, so. Nine o'clock, 9:00 AM?
Right, 9:00 AM.
They accept the thing we won't schedule.
Right, if, if we, right, we have graduation, wait, is there a graduation?
We have.
We've done it before, right, yeah.
We have done it before.
Yep, we can do it, we've got to do it, we've got to get this done, it's definitely a time, time issue, yep, okay. Okay.
And with that, I have nothing else to say.
Okay, all right, very good. And next we have approve the minutes. Approve it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kenny, second by this one, approve the minutes, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. All right, citizen comments, we're at the end of business, are there any citizen comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go into the board member committee reports and end of business. Mr. Baller? Ms. Bryant? Ms. Powers? Ms. Kelly?
I'm starting to enjoy May because we're talking about great kids, I did Take Stop in Children, Tom was there, and what do we do before Take Stop in Children? The upper...
Upper mouth, very close.
Alex, student of the month.
And Ivy.
And that's what it's all about, our kids.
Yes, it is.
Kenny?
Just that Ms. Counts did a great job at Take Stop in Children, and Mr. Dunn, thank you for your words.
All right, thank you, and I have these committee assignments, I want you to look over them as well as the SAC committees, so if you would, are you taking one of this one? I appreciate you all offering to give up, give up one, and certainly if there is an issue, I think, you know, I'd be willing to consider, so I want you to look at these.
No, that's okay. Oh, good.
And Mr. Dunn?
Yes, ma'am.
I had another one added to my list. I don't have the exact name, I'll give it to you, it's the mental health.
Okay, that's correct, the mental health, okay, that is correct. And also, there was a committee meeting scheduled on one of the days that we are going to be at the annual conference, they're having a combined student progression plan meeting. Now...
Doug, we need another one.
So the question for the board is, on Thursday, June 14th, Ms. Douglas had scheduled a combined student progression plan meeting, and Ms. Birroby had said that all of us were going to be out or not available that day.
I advised her that no board members would be available that day, and she was going to look at the possibility of scheduling.
Right, so I talked to her, and I just wanted to get the input of the board as far as attending the combined student progression plan meeting. We're all on different progression plans, elementary, middle, high school progression plans, do we feel comfortable enough by letting them to continue to have the scheduled meeting, or would you prefer that we ask them to reschedule it when one of us can be there?
If it's not, if it's convenient.
And who's, who's gonna be on it? Because usually at that point, because there's three of us, usually one of us-
That's true, we can't all be there.
Wait, the only way you can all be there is if, I mean, if we, we can notice the meeting, but I don't think that was, I don't think we need to have all three of us in on that meeting.
Right.
It'd be usually better just one. I think Ms. Baller before, we just went setting one at the most.
Alright. Okay, so, so we'll-
If, I was just gonna say, I honestly don't, as much as if we, for time's sake, if we don't have it, I don't have a problem since, you know, we've gotten this far, if there's something that comes up, we can always-
Well, I've felt pretty comfortable with the middle school progression plan committee.
I was fine with the middle school at this point.
Yeah, and who had the elementary school? So, so how, what are your feelings, Ms. Powers, on that as far as, were you comfortable with what you had in the?
Oh, yes, very much.
Okay, so, is that alright, is that, is that okay, Ms. Count?
Just, just 'cause we can, 'cause I'm afraid we're, time gets away from us if we don't get it done by-
Right, and there are quite a few people that have it on the calendar, so I was, so I'm, I'm fine with that, so we'll just go ahead and continue with that, okay, alright.
What are we doing now? Say it again? We're moving on.
We're, we're gonna move on with the combined, we're gonna let them have the meeting on, on the fourteenth, we're moving on. But we're gonna go ahead and let them have the combined meeting.
The staff, the district, can you run it on business?
Yes.
Right, right, so they won't be represented there this time. Alright, so as you look over this, are there any things like, wow, I'd rather, you know, would you, you know, I tried to look at, you know, each having an elementary and a upper, upper grades, secondary school. Ms. Count, I put you on the middle school progression plan because you have two middle schools, I believe, which was new for you.
She's been in a middle school, Tom. She goes away around the middle school pretty good.
So, and, let's see, Ms. Powers? You had been on the gift advisory council, was that yours before?
It was, I'm not doing anything, it's not that, it's not that.
No, and you know what, it's kind of morphed into different things with ESE, so actually it, it, it's kind of perfect, Mr. Dodd, the way you did it.
Okay, so is any, or any, or is everyone okay with the committee assignments with this page?
Sure.
Okay. And Ms. Verarami, or Ms. Adele, would you make an note of that for mental health on there for Ms. Powers, because that is a new, new-
It's a new brand.
Yes. Okay, as far as the SAC committee meetings? Okay, so this will start as of June one, so any of your meetings this month will continue, but this will take place June first.
Just, we also wanna check to make sure maybe with some of the meeting, I know I was at a SAC where they started making dates, sometimes now that we've got new assignments, make sure there's no conflicts, just with your SAC.
Oh, yes.
If so, I would assume we let Mr. Ebert know?
Or Ms. Crowe.
That's a good idea.
Just, just look it over.
No, that's, that's a good idea.